Here.
Gray.
Here.
Jerem is absent. Milton.
Here.
Pauls.
Here.
Thompson.
Here.
Mr. President.
Here. Please rise for the pledge of imocation by Councilmember Ben Gray.
I pledge allegiance to the liberty of the United States of America and to the republic which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
As we come up on this Thanksgiving holiday, there's just a couple of things I want us to think about. First of all, we have a significantly growing problem of homelessness in our community. And they live in various shelters around our community. So, on Thanksgiving Day, for those of you who have the opportunity and would wish to help work with some of these families and their growing number of families, we would encourage you to participate and help wherever you can to help our growing homeless population. Secondly, I have not made any comments up to this point about Ferguson, Missouri. But I do want us to think about Ferguson and keep them in our prayers as they deal with some very difficult issues. And the fact of the matter is that across this country, we have not yet the way we need to learn to address the issues of race and class. And until we do that, Ferguson's are going to happen all across this country. We need to think about that and be prepared to do what is necessary to turn these problems around. Thank you.
City Clerk certified publication on the daily record on November 22nd. Notice for a brief council of regular city council meetings, November 25th, 2014. A current copy of the Meetings Act is posting a white binder on the east wall of legislative chambers.
Thank you. I think last week, for the first time in a year and a half, I forgot to read this statement, so maybe I'll read it twice today. Good afternoon and welcome to the Omaha City Council. This meeting is conducted in public and by law may only address the topics listed on this published agenda. The council will hear testimony but will not engage in debate of issues with the public at this meeting. During testimony, it's not appropriate to applaud or convey disapproval. These actions only detract from the formal decorum of the meeting. At this time, please turn off or mute any electronic device.
Zoning ordinance on final rating and planning board attachments. Item number five and six are one case. Five is ordinance to amend the boundaries of the major commercial corridor overlay district to incorporate into that district the property located southeast of 132nd and I Streets. A Planning Board and Planning Department recommend approval. Six is resolution special use permit. Application for a large project special use permit to allow hotel in the general industrial district located southeast of 132nd and I Streets is hereby approved. A Planning Board and Planning Department recommend approval.
Public hearings on items number five and six are today. Are there any proponents? Seeing none any opponents. Public hearings closed.
Motion approved.
Roll call.
Gernat.
Yes.
Gray.
Yes.
Milton. Pauls. Thompson. Mr. President.
Yes.
Five and six are passed six to zero. I have number seven ordinance to amend the official zoning map the City of Omaha adopted by section 5565, the National Code by converting to Omaha zoning classifications. Areas of Douglas County added to the City of Omaha three mile zoning jurisdiction. A Planning Board and Planning Department recommend approval.
Public hearing on number seven is today. Are there any proponents? Seeing none any opponents. Public hearings closed. Mr. Thompson.
Thank you, Mr. President. City planning.
James Thiel.
Director. Mr. Thiel, if you could just for the average everyday citizen that watches this broadcast, put this in ninth or 10th grade language. What are we doing here?
Excuse me, Congressman. As a result of the annexation, although most of them were totally surrounded by the city, there were some on the western portion of the city that were annexed. Whenever the annexation occurs, the three mile extratorarial jurisdiction for zoning and subdivision controls extends outward. In this case, it's a very small area. It's roughly about a half a square mile. It runs in kind of a crescent shape, if you would, from Pacific Street about 152nd down towards 128th and Q area. So, it's a very small area. It doesn't really change anything other than it puts that into city's jurisdiction. We previously had -- previously it was zoned by the county, so we're bringing it up to the current code, current zoning code that's appropriate for that area based upon what is there.
So, there will be a few homes that now are in the three mile zone that were not formally in that zone, correct?
That's correct. For an individual, perhaps the only thing that they might notice is that the city now has responsibility for building permits versus the county. That's the likely thing that they might notice.
Do we ever send that out in writing or we just post it in the newspaper?
It is just posted in the newspaper.
Okay.
We do have an agreement with the county, so the county provides notifications if they have any permits in progress.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Thank you. No further lights. Roll call.
Gernat.
Yes.
Gray.
Yes.
Milton. Pauls. Thompson.
Yes.
Mr. President.
Yes.
Seven is passed six to zero. Liquor, item number eight, nine are one case. Eight is Little Espana, 11036 Elm Street, Class I, Class C liquor license, no application, no location. And nine is a catering license for the same applicant at the same location.
Public hearings on items eight and nine are today. Are there any proponents? Come up and give your name and...
Carlos Mendez, and address 6035 North 167th Court, Omaha, Nebraska, 681167.
Good afternoon. Palmyra Balstina, 093 Castler Street, Omaha, Nebraska, 68124.
Thank you, Carlos, and thanks for coming down. So, this is the Espana in Benson also opening a western branch, right?
Yes, we're expanding. We're excited to be part of the community and been in Benson for over 11 years already. So, we're excited to move in along and go into a different area and just support the community.
Great. You do a great job in Benson, too. Appreciate having you there.
Thank you.
Any other proponents today? Any opponents? Public hearings closed. Mr. Thompson.
Thank you, Mr. President. I, too, have heard good things about what you do in Benson and welcome to my district. Really appreciate the expansion of business. What were you, what are you next to? Are you next to TD Ameritrade or?
No, I'm actually taking over the space that used to be occupied by Taste.
Oh, okay.
That's their location.
Okay. All right. Thank you. So, that's your district. Your district. Okay.
Okay, Mr. Paul. Mr. Pauls.
Okay. It's right across the street from the Rock Brook, our Garden Cafe in Rock Brook. I want to welcome you to that. In fact, I talked to the owner of that restaurant. He's tickled to death to have you there because you, you know, you add another flair to that area. The question I have, because I read part of your description of how your Spanish restaurant all came about, and I'm going to ask you a question because just show you that I did read it. Do you put the bread on the wine to keep the flies out?
Well, actually, yes. That's actually how the story started. Tapam means lead in Spanish. And basically, in Spain, many years ago, people used to go and have a drink in a bar. And actually, before getting a fly in the drink, they actually used to put a lead. So, everything developed from there. They started putting bread, they started putting olive, and then everything developed to what we actually do right now.
Okay. No, I just thought that was very interesting information that you gave us. Welcome.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you. No further lights.
Motion move.
Second.
Roll call.
Gernat.
Yes.
Gray.
Yes.
Milton.
Yes.
Pauls.
Yes.
Thompson.
Yes.
Mr. President.
Yes.
Eight and nine are adopted six to zero.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Item number 10, L7 Mayor's, 5447 South 24th Street, Class I liquor license, no application, no location. This is a long form application ordered by the Rescule Control Commission.
Public hearing on number 10 is today. Are there any proponents?
Hi. My name is Christina Soriano, and it's El Siete Maris, 5447 South 24th Street.
Thank you. Any other proponents today? Any opponents? Public hearings closed.
Motion to approve.
Roll call.
Gernat.
Yes.
Gray.
Yes.
Milton.
Yes.
Pauls.
Yes.
Thompson.
Yes.
Mr. President.
Yes.
It's adopted six to zero. Thank you. You're done.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Item 11, TNA Grocery. 3247 North 42nd Street, packaged liquor license, no application, no location.
Public hearing on number 11 is today. Are there any proponents? Any, please come down.
Hello, everyone. TNA Grocery, 3247 North 42nd Street, and my name is Tariq Ali. I'm currently moved from Iowa to Omaha to buy the Jane Jane Grocery Store.
Okay. Thank you. Any other proponents today? Any opponents? Public hearings closed. Mr. Gray.
Thank you, Mr. President. Just very quickly, I just wanted to just remind our audience, and I did mention to my colleagues on the council here earlier that this convenience store was one of the first ones to work with the Health Department and put in fresh fruits and vegetables at their convenience store. And I'm hoping that you all will continue to do the same thing.
Yes, definitely will continue.
Okay. Thank you. And appreciate your efforts to continue to be a good neighbor in a community where we've got some challenges, but you do a nice job and want you to continue. Motion approved.
Motion in a second. Roll call.
Gernat.
Yes.
Gray.
Yes.
Milton.
Yes.
Pauls.
Yes.
Thompson.
Yes.
Mr. President.
Yes.
Adopted six to zero.
Thanks.
Item number 12, Figates Restaurante Italiano, 13655 California Street, request permission to appoint Aaron King, manager.
Public hearing on number 12 is today. Proponents, please.
Hi, my name is Jeremy Beck for Biaji's Restaurante Italiano, 13655 California Street. I'm the managing partner there. Aaron King's the chef partner.
Thank you. Any other proponents? Any opponents? Public hearings closed. Roll call.
Gernat.
Yes.
Gray.
Yes.
Milton.
Yes.
Pauls.
Yes.
Thompson.
Yes.
Mr. President.
Yes.
Approved six to zero.
Great. Thank you. I look forward to seeing you in there.
Thanks.
Thank you. Consent agenda. Any mayor of the city council will cause an item placed on consent agenda to be removed. Items removed consent agenda shall be taken up by city council immediately following the consent agenda in the order in which they were removed unless otherwise provided by the city council rules of order.
Public hearings on agenda items number 13 through 17 were held on November 18th. I believe... There's motion in a second. I believe Councilman Milton had some questions. Are you...
You know what? I'm, I'm, I appreciate coming down. I think I got all my questions answered this morning at pre-council. I want to thank you for all your hard work, and I appreciate you coming today.
Motion approved.
Second.
Motion in a second. Roll call.
Gernat.
Keep those pins up, Dana. If I got one thing done, it was maps and the pins. Yes.
Gray.
Yes.
Milton.
Yes.
Pauls.
Yes.
Thompson.
Yes.
Mr. President.
Yes.
13 through 17 are passed seven to zero. We're removing item number 19 from the resolution consent agenda.
Public hearings on agenda items number 18 and 20 through 28 are today. If you wish to address the city council regarding these items, please come to the microphone, indicate the agenda item number you wish to address, identify yourself by name, address, who you represent, and if you are a proponent or an opponent. Ms. Mcatee.
Good afternoon. Patty Mcatee with the Greater Omaha Chamber. I am here with agenda number 25 proponent, and I'm here to answer any questions you might have. Address is 1301 Harney Street, Omaha.
Thank you. Any other proponents or opponents? Seeing none public hearings are closed. Second. Roll call.
Gernat.
Yes.
Gray.
Yes.
Milton.
Yes.
Pauls.
Yes.
Thompson.
Yes.
Mr. President.
Yes.
18, 20 through 28 are adopted six to zero.
Thanks.
Item number 19, resolution, that resolution number 558 passed May 15th, 2012, declaring the area bounded by 114th Street and I-680 West on the west, Pacific Street on the south, West Dodge Road on the north, and I-680 East on the east as substandard invited and approved. Its designation as a community redevelopment area is hereby rescinded effective immediately.
Public hearing on number 19 is today. Are there any proponents? Seeing none any opponents. Public hearings closed. Mr. Thompson.
Thank you, Mr. President. The reason for taking this off the consent agenda was that I wasn't sure whether we would get some testimony. As you can see, no one came down. But I do want to go on record by saying that TD Ameritrade paid this note off. It relates to item number 44 also, which is on first reading. But they paid it off in a record amount of time, less than three years. Boy, if we could get others to do that, we'd really be rolling, wouldn't we? But usually, a 15-year note got paid off in less than three. And so, I thank the planning department, also the mayor, for seeing the wisdom of rescinding the designation. If you remember, colleagues, this was the area that had three gated communities in it. And so, we had to walk a real fine line when we made it a blighted and standard designation. But the right thing to do is to go ahead and remove it. And thank you, Bridget Hatley, for working with us and with the mayor. And I'm glad to see that when we make a move that might not necessarily be all that we should do, then we're wise enough to make another move to undo that. Now, I know that everybody doesn't agree with me that we shouldn't have done the designation to begin with, but all that matters is that we get it right. And I think today we do get it right by taking the designation away. There are other places that need that designation a whole lot more, South Omaha, Central Omaha, North Omaha, or even out in Elkhorn. But in that area of town right around Old Mill, it doesn't apply. So, I'm glad that we're righting the ship today, and I'm hoping for a 6-0 vote that we rescind that. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Mr. Gernat.
Thank you, Mr. President. Just for the record, I'd like to say I was on the opposite end of my colleague on that particular one, on that first vote. But I think the right thing was done back then, and TD Ameritrade has done the right thing. I hope we're doing the right thing today. If I was in form of a motion, I would second. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you. Motion in a second. Roll call.
Gernat.
Yes.
Gray.
Yes.
Milton.
Yes.
Pauls.
Yes.
Thompson.
Yes.
Mr. President.
Yes.
Adopted six to zero. Item number 29, ordinance approving a contract with BK DLP to approve and execute an independent annual audit agreement for the performance of an audit examination of all city funds and accounts.
Public hearing on number 29 was held on November 18th.
Second.
Roll call.
Gernat.
Yes.
Gray.
Yes.
Milton.
Yes.
Pauls.
Yes.
Thompson.
Yes.
Mr. President.
Yes.
29 is passed six to zero. Item 30, resolution that Dana Washington is hereby appointed by the City Council, City of Omaha, to the MECA Board of Directors to certify your term commencing May 10th, 2015.
Public hearing on number 30 is today. Are there any proponents? Seeing none any opponents.
Motion to approve a two-week layover.
Um...
Second.
Public hearings closed. Motion in a second. Mr. Gernat.
Thank you, Mr. President. The, the motion is typically what we have done. I know my colleague, Councilmember Thompson, I, we've been here for a while. This isn't nothing new when a request is made from another council member to lay over a vote, so we could have a full council to vote on this. Mr. Jerem has an excused absence because of a funeral today. And I certainly would like to honor that. And at the same time, I believe that's the date, December 9th. Is that correct, Mr. Clerk? For two weeks?
Yes.
Seventy-two. That's the day.
Round say.
We also, with the Electrical Board nominee comes back on that date, which I do plan to support, that I'm glad to have both of these on the agenda and take care where we would have a full council. Thank you, Mr. President.
And your motion is to continue the public hearing, right, sir?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you. Ms. Milton.
And I would like to have a substitute motion. I would like to lay this over until the first council meeting in January.
Extend the time.
For the, for the reason that I, I think that there's no precedence for, for having an appointment made this early when the, when this appointment isn't even up until May of 2015. Really don't want to belabor this, and I think I've talked to other council members. My goal would be to have, I think that this board is so important. My goal would be to have a 7-0, I would like to have a 7-0 vote. And I think I would like to take just a little more time to make sure that the process has been done correctly. I think the candidate is fabulous, but I'm not sure that the public anticipated an appointment this early. I couldn't find an appointment made this early anywhere else. I believe Mr. Thiessen was appointed in January for his appointment, and so I...
January 6th.
I would be okay with, I would be okay with that. But I would ask the council to lay this over until our first meeting in, in January.
That would be six weeks till January 6th.
Yeah, I would like a six-week layover. I believe we laid over the appointment for the Electrical Board by three weeks. I don't think six weeks is unheard of. I know we have two weeks off. That's why I'm asking. But I think January would be more appropriate time, and I would like to have consensus by the board and give the person that we're putting on this board the confidence that we all support that appointment. Moreover, I think when we appoint somebody to a five-year board, I think we should also let them know we expect them to fulfill the five years and that we support that five years. And if we choose to replace them at the end, that we're not going to do it too soon and really, in effect, make them a lame duck. And, and I think that's the message we're sending. I think that Mr. Lynn has done an excellent job, and this isn't about the people. It's not about the candidate. I think this is more about the process. And so, I really would, in order to have an open and transparent process for the citizens of Omaha and for future board appointments, I would rather not set a precedence that we're going to be making them six months in advance. And so, for that reason, I would ask, and I don't want to belabor this any longer, and I appreciate the discussions that I've had, especially with Councilman Festerson. We had a good discussion earlier, and I, and I do appreciate that. And I think you found an excellent candidate for the MECA board. And if anybody here on the, on the council I think I've known are the longest. In fact, she hired me for my first job out of law school. So, I have known, I have known Dana Washington, and I have a lot of respect for her. And because I have that much respect for her, I would like to see this process done correctly. I would like to see the council be able to have a seven, hopefully, a 7-0 vote or at least a consensus. And then I would also like to let our, our other board member know how much we appreciate him and that this isn't, this isn't something that is about the MECA member we're, we're replacing. And I think it puts both Dana Washington and John Lynn in a somewhat uncomfortable position if we appoint, if we appoint a new candidate this early. So, I would ask that we just let the holidays, enjoy our Thanksgiving, enjoy our Christmas. We're going to have three meetings off between now and then, and that we take this up on our, on the very first meeting in January.
Thank you. Mr. Thompson.
Yes, I will go ahead and second the substitute motion. My reasoning is slightly different and includes what Councilman Milton has said, but it, there's another piece to it. And the piece that I bring to it is that I've been around a long time with these, with these nominations, and in every case, we had a minimum of three, three candidates. And this would be the first time ever that we would just have one candidate, and that's it. That right there is setting a dangerous precedent. I think, I think we should always keep it to where we're pulling from a pool of candidates and not just predetermining ahead of time one person. There, there are some other individuals who are minorities who are interested, and perhaps these other people may not, may or may not be as strong as Ms. Washington. But I'm really afraid that the, that the, this council will get a black eye by saying we won't try to look at a pool of applicants first before we will it down. And so, for that reason, I'd like the six-week layover to allow other people to, to be able to forward their, their resumes. And maybe or may, maybe not, those new resumes may not make a difference, but I'd like to at least go back to the pattern that we've, we've had long before a lot of you were elected. Gary and I have been around, and it just seems like the pattern that we've set, the precedence that we've set, was a good one. And sticking with that might be wise. So, for that reason, I want to second the motion to go for six weeks with hopes that the way we used to do it is the way we go back to. And, you know, the candidate we're speaking about right now is a strong candidate, and I am not anti-that candidate. I'm not anti-diversity. In fact, I'd like some of the, the new potential people to go into the pool to also be minority too. So, I'm really concerned about the reputation of the board and trying to make sure we don't get a black eye. I think it's important for a person who's been around for a while to at least bring that up as, as something that we need to consider. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Gernat.
Thank you, Mr. President. One of the things Councilmember Milton had said was the process and quantified by Councilmember Thompson. And I agree. I think that's the purpose. What we're doing here is the process. And having gotten that black eye already with the last incident that we went through, I would certainly want to avoid doing that. I would certainly want to avoid doing that, so I won't be supporting a six-week layover.
Thank you, Mr. Pauls.
The thing that I enjoyed hearing was precedent, so I think all of us, council and the mayor, should look at and make appointments on precedents, and I will go along with Councilwoman Milton, if she believes five.
Six weeks.
Six weeks from now is significant, I will go along with that. I will be interested to see how many people will apply. Thank you.
Thank you. I would just add at this point, it's, I think this is good conversation, and I know, you know, when you run a group process and you have seven different opinions, it sometimes is hard to get consensus, and I think we're getting close, at least I heard almost everybody say they're supportive of the candidate we have before us today, or think she would be very qualified, or have already indicated they want to see her move forward, and that's why we're on the agenda today. I think it's reasonable to support a two-week layover to December ninth, and I agree with Councilman Gernant's thoughts about another appointment of interest at that time, that I think can also have consensus at that time and move both these forward. I don't see there being a big difference between, we're talking about a three big difference here in terms of if there's concern about the process, and I don't see how that makes a difference. In fact, I think that could be misleading in the respect that a majority has already indicated to me, this is the candidate they want to proceed with, and to act otherwise, I think would be a bit misleading to the public, and on top of that, I think we do owe Councilman Jerome the courtesy of his circumstances today, which is due to a tragedy as to why he's not here, and it was his request to lay over the two weeks, so he will be here, and perhaps we can have this conversation again at that point. So I would support the two-week layover. Councilman Thompson.
Not to belabor the point, but I think it's important to mention one more time that the black eye that I was referring to was that in previous years, we've pulled from a pool of candidates, whereas this time, we've predetermined one candidate, so I believe that that's the precedent that I am trying to avoid. I just believe that the process that we've had for many, many years works, and I'd like to not see that we go away from that. Mr. Clerk, if we're deadlocked today on the amount of weeks, because we don't have an odd number, we have an even number, either way, if we're three-three, it'll die, right?
Buster Robinson, clerk, if this motion is a three-three, it is dead.
It's dead, and then in that case, then we go to the voting it up or down.
No, we go back to the original motion to lay it over two weeks.
To lay over two weeks, okay. I'm done, Mr. President.
Thank you. There's a motion in a second for six weeks. Roll call.
And continue the public hearing. Correct. Gernant. Gray. Milton. Paul. Thompson. Mr. President.
No.
It fails on a three-three vote. Yeah, well, that's already back, that's back on, the motion layover two weeks is now on.
There's a motion in a second for two weeks for process reasons. I hope we get a majority on this vote, but I suppose even if we don't, the councilmember who's not here who did request the two-week layover could always re-introduce if he desires, by way of process, so that's why I point that out. Motion in a second on a two-week layover, roll call.
Gernant.
Yes.
Gray.
Yes.
Milton. Paul. Thompson.
No.
Mr. President.
Yes.
It fails on a two-to-two vote, two-to-two vote. By council rules, you have to take some kind of action.
Motion to approve.
Second. So this would be a motion to approve and a second, which may pass, but if it doesn't, again, the councilmember who's not here has the option to re-introduce the motion he was supporting, correct?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you. Roll call.
Gernant.
Yes.
Gray.
Yes.
Milton. Paul. Thompson.
For reasons of process, I vote no.
Mr. President.
Yes.
It fails on a three-to-three vote.
Thank you.
Pursuant to city council rule seven eight, due to no meeting being held December second, the third reading and on agenda item number thirty-one through forty-two shall be held on December ninth. The public hearing on these items are today. Item thirty-one, ordinance approving an amendment to the Cypress Point Two Tax Center Financing Redevelopment Project Redevelopment Agreement for the project at southwest corner of Sixtieth and Hartman Avenue.
Public hearing on number thirty-one is today, proponents, please.
Good afternoon, Bridget Hadley, here to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you. Any opponents? Public hearings closed.
Item number thirty-two, ordinance approving redevelopment tax center financing loan agreement with PDPM to implement the port tax increment financing redevelopment project plan located at forty-three fifty-five Davenport Street.
Public hearing on number thirty-two is today, proponents, please.
Bridget Hadley, city planning, here to answer any questions you may have.
Any other proponents? Any opponents? Public hearings closed.
Item thirty-three, ordinance approving redevelopment tax center financing loan financing redevelopment agreement with South Omaha Surgical Center Realty to implement the South Omaha Surgical Center Tax Center Financing Project Plan located at thirty-two oh one, South Twenty-Fourth Street.
Public hearing on number thirty-three is today, proponents, please.
Bridget Hadley, city planning, here to answer any questions you may have.
Any other proponents? Any opponents? Public hearings closed.
Item thirty-four, ordinance rescinding ordinance number three-eight one-one-eight, approving a tax center financing redevelopment project agreement with Turner Park North to implement the Ryan Berry Tax Center Financing Redevelopment Plan.
Public hearing on number thirty-four is today, are there any proponents? Any opponents? Go ahead.
Bridget Hadley, city planning, proponent, and here to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you. Any opponents? Public hearings closed.
Item thirty-five, ordinance to establish a class, new Class A Final Liquid Storage District A one fifty at one hundred and twenty-nine O two Millard Airport Plaza.
Public hearing on number thirty-five is today, proponents, please.
Dennis Anderson, T.O.G.O.T., reps in the Omaha Airport Authority, just here to answer any questions.
Thank you. Any other proponents? Any opponents? Public hearings closed, Mr. Paul, sir.
Thank you, Mr. President. Could I just have you say, I want to thank you for coming, because I did have some questions this morning, because I can see why, where this has passed the planning's expectations, the fire department. My concern is about the size of the container, you might say, forty thousand gallons, and I'd like to know what, what happens if that goes.
Currently, the refueling operations at Millard Airport are conducted from an underground storage tank system. That underground storage tank system is leaking, they want to upgrade, and because of the past poor performance of underground storage tanks, they want to move it above ground. Current plans are for two twelve thousand gallon tanks, one having jet fuel and one having hundred low lead aviation fuel. They will be in ballistic rated tanks, dual-walled tanks, there's three or four inches of concrete in between the walls, bollered it off, it'll be on a credit card self-serve system so people could come in and general aviation and fuel on a Sunday when the FBO is closed.
Okay, did I hear you say two twelve thousand gallons instead of the forty thousand?
Under the recommendation of the fire department, they said to make it forty thousand in case there were some additional storage, we wouldn't have to come back to city council.
Okay, and in the past, you've stored it underground?
Yes.
And it's, you're doing it for economic reasons?
And protection of the environment. It's easier to manage an above-ground tank.
Well, then we could say that on a lot of above-ground tanks throughout the United States. I'm just concerned, let's say something happens, I need some kind of a description of the results of an explosion, because I don't think, I mean, to me, it looks like it's pretty close to home, to some houses.
Again, they are ballistic rated tanks, so it's, it's a stainless steel, or a steel tank, dual-walled, in between the walls of the tank is reinforced concrete. They're specifically designed for this application, they're installed at a lot of other airports around the country. The fire department thinks it's safe.
Okay, okay. I noticed that your first, the first go-around, it was not, the placement of the fuel storage on this property was not approved, but then you went to what, to the federal government, is that what I'm reading, by the FAA seven forty-sixty permit?
Yeah, Olson and Associates actually did the placement of the tanks.
And, okay, so you're telling me we've had the same amount of fuel there before, it was just underground?
Correct.
And we're, who owns the fuel tanks?
The Omaha Airport Authority.
Thank you.
Thank you, no further lights.
Ordinance providing for the transfer of non-exclusive permanent and temporary construction easements to Metropolitan Utilities District located in North Market Square in the city of Florence, now in addition to the city of Omaha.
Public hearing on number thirty-six is today, any proponents? Any opponents? Public hearings closed.
Item thirty-seven, ordinance approving a contract with Medical Enterprises for drug and alcohol testing of city employees and prospective employees.
Public hearing on number thirty-seven is today, proponents, please.
Kimball Kenersley, City of Omaha HR Department, here to answer any questions you might have.
Thank you. Any other proponents? Any opponents? Public hearings closed.
Item thirty-eight, ordinance approving a contract with Elkhorn Public Schools to provide one associate school resource officer in a marked police cruiser to the premises of the Elkhorns High School.
Public hearing on number thirty-eight is today, proponents, please. Any opponents? Public hearings closed.
Item thirty-nine, ordinance proving an agreement with Douglas County Attorney's Office, Douglas County Sheriff's Office, Douglas County Department of Corrections, Douglas County Public Defender's Office to provide funding from a grant for security improvements, technology improvements, a litigation support manager position, and an immigration attorney position.
Public hearing on number thirty-nine is today, are there any proponents? Any opponents? Public hearings closed.
Item forty, ordinance to prove an agreement with the, to provide funding for the position of Project Safe Neighborhood's firearm clerk.
Public hearing on number forty is today, are there any proponents? See none any opponents? Public hearings closed.
Item forty-one, ordinance to prove acceptance and authorize distribution of a grant to provide funding for cardiac monitors.
Public hearing on number forty-one is today, are there any proponents? See none any opponents? Public hearings closed.
Item forty-two, ordinance to prove an agreement with Nebraska State Patrol to authorize funding from the Violence Gang Crime Reduction Program to provide funding for crime lab follow-up investigation work, two thousand and fifteen Association of Firearms and Tool Mark Examiners Training Seminar attendance and procurement of specialized crime lab equipment.
Public hearing on number forty-two is today, are there any proponents? See none any opponents? Public hearings closed.
I want the clerk to say that in three seconds.
Pursuant to city council rule seventy, the agenda item number forty-three shall be over two weeks for publication of public hearing. Pursuant to city council rule seven eight, due to no meeting being held December second, the second reading and public hearing on agenda items forty-four through forty-five shall be held on December ninth.
Roll call.
Grant.
Yes.
Gray.
Yes.
Milton. Paul. Thompson. Mr. President.
Yes. Happy Thanksgiving.
Happy Thanksgiving. It is two forty-one.